Ten o'clock, December 12th, 2016, call this meeting in order. Roll call, smiling.
Here.
Hamlin.
Here.
Murphy here. Approval of warrants and claims.
Make that motion.
Approve those.
Want to have you on a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, approval of amendments to the last regular meeting, December 5th, 2016.
Look good to me. I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, discussion, possible action regarding following permits. Well, I have one for C and D. Get a temporary order on for me. And all his requirements are met, so I'm gonna make the motion to approve that. It's District Two.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Number six, approve this, approve monthly report for the following, the Sheriff's Office. We were short last week.
That's a dollar amount and she will get a percent.
I got a motion to approve this.
Make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
For the sheriff, it's, um, three-five-three-eight-point-nine-two. And then the water. Crispers.
Any doubt now?
Yeah. It's ten-thousand-six-ninety-six-point-two-nine.
Number s-. Number seven, discussion, possible action regarding payment processing agreement between Forte and Woods County Clerk.
Now, this is, this is done. So that we can start, we can take payment by credit card or debit card.
Oh, there's there.
And it's just in your office, right?
Yeah. This is just from my office. And, uh, 'cause we've not ever been able to do that. It would be handy for the land man if they could pay for the coffee.
Are you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion to accept that.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ready?
Is that all our, our rent and?
No, that's just the motor vehicle and alcohol beverage that they give them each month.
All of the thing, yeah.
Yeah.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay, number eight, discussion, possible action regarding to approve a change to the Woods County Industrial Development Authority bylaws in Section Six, C two trustee two to amend them by changing the Alba Industrial Foundation Corporation Board trustee position to an at-large trustee.
You had it on, I didn't read that.
Okay, I'll make the motion for that. And the reason being is I serve on the Woods County Industrial Authority and we're having problems. No one has the time or the desire from the Alba Industrial Foundation to serve, so we're wanting to just at-large so we can fill the board.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, well, I guess it'll just, it'll be shown in the minutes that we approve that change.
Right.
So we can move on at, uh...
Is that Jennifer?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Move on at the board meeting this week about starting that process to get those bylaws changed.
Okay.
Number nine, discussion, possible action regarding the six-month biz, number sixteen-seventeen-oh-six.
You got time.
Do I?
You got time for that.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion, you just open them and, and list them.
Tab them for them?
Yeah, and tab them like you have in the past and decide which ones we need to approve or are, are approvable and go from there.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Short and sweet, huh?
It works on you.
Always is, isn't it?
No.
Just feels like it. Number ten, discussion, possible action regarding resolution for adopting a longevity pay program. And this, this longevity pay program is one set up by the State of Oklahoma. I've looked at it with the, the exceptions, I think we wanna make some amendments that we check with the auditor as long as we do not exceed their, what they do. There's a schedule, there's a schedule that we've looked at that where it starts to have to be a two-year employee. Uh, we're gonna amend it from, and make everyone's anniversary date, uh, November 30th?
No, December 1st.
December one.
December one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
December one.
December one, okay, it says on here.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a resolution that's showing, and I worked on, and I'll just read it for it. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners will adopt State of Oklahoma Longevity Pay Plan Title Seventy-four, Chapter Twenty-seven-A, Section Eight Forty, Dice Two, Point One Eight, amending the anniversary date to December 1st of the year hired for eligible county employees. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners agree the ma- maximum pay per individual will be, and that's left blank, that's what we need to talk about there. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners will consider and review this every year and the program may be suspended if appropriations are insufficient. And whereas the resolution will be funded by the County General Funds unless otherwise instructed by the Board of County Commissioners. Therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Woods County approve this resolution commencing December 1st, 2016. That makes it retroactive, that makes this, that, and I, it was brought to my attention, we have a one, two, and three percent raise, our, or pay scale already. This, uh, Oklahoma longevity pay deal, that, the only two things that we're changing is, is when you go to work for the State of Oklahoma, your anniversary starts, or your, yeah, that ever, it, it is the day you go to work. So we can make all the checks at the same time. We're making everybody's anniversary for this particular situation, December 1st. That way, everybody will claw that, their checks will come at, in the middle of December. Uh, actually, from, in years, after following this, it'll come at this particular meeting time when we pay bills in the middle of the month and we don't normally pay payroll in the middle of the month.
So they'll come up a year from now this time?
Well, we're gonna make this retroactive. They're gonna get paid for last year.
Yeah.
2016 is our plans if we approve this deal.
So unless paid period, definitely.
But this year, it'll be a pay period late because we haven't approved this yet, is what it amounts to. We have to wait till the next pay.
This is 2016 longevity pay, right?
Yes.
And, and the three categories are depending on how long we've been with you, right?
Yeah.
That's the...
They have to be here two years. There is a, there is an actual schedule from the state.
I've got a statute.
And, yeah. But what, the other thing that we, we left blank on this resolution is because we have a one, two, and three percent, I think we're gonna max this one and our three, those employees get a three percent raise if they've been here for fifteen years. That pay scale at twenty years on the longevity pay, you add, uh, for two additional years they work, past twenty years, it says the state pays them $200. So if they've been here twenty-two years, they'll draw $2,200. We, I think we need to look at maxing this out because they're already getting a three percent raise at that point. And, you know, I mean, if an eighteen-year-old goes to work for the county, at that time, they're getting a pretty good, um, increase in pay, but, uh, from the three percent...
Too great.
Okay, the twenty years, uh, you make the motion at twenty years it maxes out.
You made the motion. Okay, I'll second.
On favor? I mean, we'll, okay, we'll do that and then, and, and in, within that, what, you need, this motion needs to be is if you approve this resolution with the twenty years or two thousand as a maximum deal on one, 'cause we just got, it's just one agenda item.
Right.
Right, this left blank.
Right, and then just write that in there.
I can write the, you put a cap at two thousand.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. Here, Lynn. Is the actual resolution itself that we just approved.
No.
That, that deal was blank.
I mean, blank, that'll take time for that. Exactly.
Right. And what we'll do is, is that, the one she gave you, that statute will be included in the policy manual that every employee gets when...
Okay.
With the copy of this resolution. All in favor of that? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, so every employee, when they go to work. We've had an incentive pay that was based off of a formula that I created that, on how well the businesses in Woods County did, and, and this year, there wasn't any. It appears, the way things are going, there won't be one next year, so this one is a standard deal the state has, so we decided to adopt this rather than...
The other was based on my sales taxes.
Yeah, it was, that's what I did. And it's kinda hard to...
So this is safer if you want.
Well...
You can budget that.
Yeah, right. Right.
I do.
Yeah, this, yeah, this can be budgeted.
And it is...
They can plan on it.
Yeah. That, that's the reason for the change. And, and we decided to make it retroactive because there hasn't, that, that other incentive wasn't able to be paid this year.
And officers do not get this, just noise.
Number eleven, discussion, possible action regarding the closing out of the special insurance fund account, which has not been active since before 1993, and putting the remainder of the $1,577.27 in the general camp.
And we'll do that with a purchase order and a warrant, if you guys approve that. It's just closing out.
That, that account's sitting there for nothing. I'll make the motion to approve to close the account.
I'll second.
Move the funds.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't need to sign anything on that, just the bill would be the... Okay.
Yeah, and just the minutes is gonna be in that.
Okay. Discussion, number twelve, discussion, possible action regarding the closing out of the juvenile affairs incentive block grant account by warrant, warrant and returning, return to the Office of Juvenile Affairs.
Right, I, we will want to close that one out too, and, um, the auditor said I needed to check where that came from, so I called the guy at the Office of Juvenile Affairs and he said, yeah, if we weren't going, we weren't still in that program, then they would love to have that money back, 'cause they do have a few counties that are still there.
That's still in the program.
And that way, they could use that money.
Don't need that money being tied up here.
Right, 'cause we can't use it, so, and it's been sitting there too since ninety, nothing's happened since ninety-three, only eighty-three, so.
I'll make the motion, we close that out, return the money to juvenile affairs.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to number thirteen, discussion, possible action regarding the request for county assistance from Maripan Funeral Chat. Okay, I talked with Assistant DA and all this, and I found out, that's, it's left pretty open, the statutes are, but we did some research and, uh, here's what my opinion is from talking to him, that is probably if these people that request that are getting any type of assistance, and that's something that can be social security, uh, stuff from DHS, even the Veterans Affairs and stuff, all of those programs have a death benefit with them, and they're getting that from the taxpayers already and, uh...
If they have some assets.
Yeah, and if they have...
It'll rise.
Well, that's a, that's gonna be, we aren't gonna stop that, but I think that's a criteria. They're already getting some assistance from taxpayers, you might say, or whatever already. I don't, I don't think that we should just keep dumping taxpayers' money into the deal. I think this thing is set up for somebody that, that has absolutely nothing. I think at a later date, we need to, we need to continue to work on this and set up some real criteria to follow and, and those things. I'm starting to compile a list, but I, you know, if there are any, those benefits are already there, I, I don't see the need for us to add to it. I mean, pretty soon, we have to set this, if we aren't careful, everybody's gonna bombard us with, we're gonna set precedents and I don't wanna do that. And it's, and that's...
And we don't like...
And that's in the form of a motion that I'll make, from what I've learned legally.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Number fourteen, emergency manager, Ethan Fiddler is gonna give us a report on what has been happening in emergency management. That's a pretty long list, normal.
Any emergencies?
On favor?
Been a long way you're asking.
I'm just kidding, these are just printed them out.
This is kind of some of the stuff we've been doing lately. Last week, we had a cameo in Maripot Training, which is pretty much a mapping program, and we've had, um, two dispatches get in and did that, and it allows you to, um, it'll show hazardous material sites located all within Woods County. Um, it allows us to identify pipelines with emergency contact information. And it's basically set up on all different layers, and where you can pull key resources and if they need a dispatcher, they can use it. You can also go in and add specific resources to different locations, so you can map out, county barns, what equipment they have, if they have specific site plans or anything like that, and they can be attached for anywhere in the county. And DEQ has that set up for rivers, power lines, um, hospitals, schools, and all this stuff can be attached, so if they need to print out a report for something, they have a call, they can go in there, pull that information up, pull a report, and send it to anybody that you need to send it, on a cell phone for DPS locations, full reports, so. It's kinda something that we're working on, updating other stuff and adding information to it. Pretty handy, but it's pretty sophisticated too at the same time, so it's gonna take a little while to get everything updated. Have a OK first training coming up in February, and that'll be a week-long training. I guess it's a, uh, close to a meteorologist kind of training for severe weather and stuff like that, fire weather and all that. And then we're also gonna be, it's just tentative date, but we're gonna have National Weather Service come up and put on a storm spotter training. We're probably gonna move to those dates, 'cause they're gonna end here. But it'll be for Woods, Alphata, and Major County. It'll be open to anybody in town. For public, more so, be more aware of things instead of being frantic when there's not really a situation going on. Down here's the quarterly dates for our EMPG contract through Oklahoma Emergency Management. Um, the first quarter's almost up, we'll be submitting that probably this week, and, uh, hopefully another month or so, we'll receive those funds for that quarter. And then our LAPC grant for handheld radios, I'm waiting on a contract, DEQ, they said it should be probably sometime this week or so before we get a contract on that, get that approved to go through. And then, right underneath that's a list of our next, uh, our meetings for 2017 for the LAPC. And we're gonna really try and get all of our, EOP has mitigations update this year. Uh, we'll be working with the State of their hopeless plan. It's big areas we need to cover, vulnerabilities and hazard assessments. Got in that radio programming software, cables, working on setting that up. To get everybody's programs how they want them, we'll go back through and update all this list. Look at all the county fire, EMS district maps are all given out to all the county districts and fire departments put in their trucks, they use, just as reference. One issue, the Easter repeater we had in Power Mount the other week. Got a quote from Stoles for a battery backup system that they said was running probably roughly ten to twelve hours depending on traffic.
And we don't have...
There's not any.
Anything after at all right now?
Other than to put a generator out there.
You put a generator.
Well, there's not one out there right now, but...
But we have...
I have one, nobody could put out there to run it.
Still gotta go out there and start it during that downtime and...
Well, that's, that's kinda the issue. If you get into a snowstorm here or whatever, maybe you might not be able to get there and then we don't have any communication, so...
What's the battery backup?
What it is, it's costing. It's gonna be right around $2,000 for them to ship it up to us, and they said I can install it. It's just, what it does is there's a power supply that's already in there that powers it.
And it's charged up and ready.
Well, the one that's in there will replace the DC power supply in it, and then it'll have a separate battery and it'll keep that battery charged, and then if power goes out, it automatically switches over.
Switches to the...
To the battery. And it'll give you, he said, depending on traffic, it'll probably tend to twelve hours. And on something where it might be...
Time enough to plow out there and get your generator in place.
Something like that, and just the other, other night when it went down, power was out for hour and a half, two hours, something, there'd be no downtime. Um, if it goes on battery backup, it'll send a signal down here, excuse me, to dispatch and let them know it's running on power supply. I've talked with, um, Radio Shack, they think this is probably the best bet to, they don't have anything big enough to run it. Looked at possibly cost for an automatic backup generator, by the time you get everything into that, you know, we're looking probably three to four times as much as that.
Does it got any kind of warranty with it, or just you thought?
I'd have to check, I'd have to check with them on that.
Well, I think we need to get that battery done.
I mean, I think...
We can replace the batteries.
Right, yeah.
I mean, and it, they're just, the warranty would probably be, I mean, be tough to do that. You can, after, maybe three, four years probably is probably what they want to...
Yeah. I wouldn't expect it to go much more than that, but... It's about a thousand for that power supply, that'll switch out the other one, and then roughly about a thousand for that battery, so. The only good thing on that is you don't have any downtime.
Yeah. Now, is it a regular, just a, like a regular deep cycle battery?
Yeah, it's like a big deep cycle sealed battery, you know?
I think that we need to get it done.
And then the thing with that too is, when I sent them the numbers on that, they said the power supply that's in there right now is just pretty much at its limits of not being quite enough to run it, and that's probably why, yeah, it gets hot in that building, but having to run the air conditioner in there to keep that repeater from burning up is because it's...
Pushing it over the line.
Pushing too much on that power supply that's already in there. So that was, that was their advice on it.
Well, we gotta have it.
You know, it's... I agree, it's, I've got that repeater building out there, it's up north of camp, and it's a west repeater, but, and I have a generator propane, it's supposed to come on and lubricate itself, it's one big enough to run a house, I mean, it's not, but what you get into is if it doesn't come on...
Yeah.
And every time I have, I've had it serviced quarterly, every time he goes there, it's not doing right, it's went down on some fault and, and it's not functioning properly, so that's what you get into, that's why this battery deal, I mean, hopefully next time it'll come on if we need it, but, uh...
Well, the thing too on this, you have to put another generator out there that's not full backup.
Right.
You can't get in there to fuel it back up.
Right, that's, that's, that's the draw to this deal.
It goes back up, and then gives you another time to get back out there and...
Right, that's, that's what the beauty of this battery backup would be, and, um, I think it...
It's probably the cheapest solution.
Yeah.
Short-term. Anyway, so, it's something we can look at and...
I think, have you ordered it, or?
No.
I think we just need to get it done now.
Okay.
I mean, we gotta have it.
Okay.
'Cause if we're out in ten minutes, that could be a tragedy, I mean, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, I mean, it was just like, when it was...
We give it some options.
When it went down, they were, it was probably forty-five minutes to an hour before they figured out that was actually down.
Right now.
So...
And that was just in a power outage.
Yeah.
In the, you get in an emergency situation, uh, it could be...
Yeah.
You know, that was, uh, there was nothing drastic going on, but you take an ice storm or a snowstorm.
Well, in a short-term event like that, you can just let it go and...
Right.
You don't have to even mess with it, you know?
Right.
It's not gonna be anything long-term, but, so...
You ain't, I'm in agreement.
We rely on that, if the power goes out, you ain't got phones and stuff, and it might be our only communication.
Well, especially within town here, with as much communications that runs on it, so...
Yeah, we need something like that, backup.
Hopefully the generator comes on here.
Yeah.
Of course, a lot of these radios are battery backed up also in case it doesn't, so that's, okay.
'Cause it's still out here at the CED?
Yeah. Okay, we've had a motion to go ahead, are you done, or will us make this motion and, and go ahead? I guess we'll bring your report, but I guess we don't even have an agenda item for that, but, well...
No. No. That's in your budget.
Can we? I'll go ahead if I'm...
Okay, okay. You're just got our blessing then, we won't have a motion.
And then the last thing is just, we've been working on trying to get our, we need to get our safety meeting scheduled for 2017, and we'll get something worked out and try and talk to everybody and see what works best, 'cause there is, for the sheds, Mondays work good for here, doesn't it?
Tuesdays don't work out very good.
What's that?
Tuesdays don't work out here very good, 'cause our VA lady's there.
Yeah. So we can work on something down that week, and, um, I'll check on price and stuff, but I thought maybe it would probably be a good idea to do, uh, first aid and CPR certification for everybody. I thought maybe it would probably be a good idea to do, uh, first aid and CPR certifications for everybody.
We haven't done CPR certification for quite some time.
I will tell you something else that just, that came up reading this report, this is good, and it's not a have-to, but I know during the fire, we still need to work on some type of communication, whether it be a Facebook page, I'm not sure about that, because not everybody's on that. Some kind of deal to keep people informed.
I've made one, but trying to, they've kinda gone ahead with certain ways, and maybe I don't know ways around it, but they want you to pay so much to try it, but I've made one, and I've been trying to build on that, and trying to get more people involved in it, trying to link it with sheriff's office and fire department, so...
I, I don't know if...
It's not something we should count on, though, for...
Right, I'm wondering about a phone system, a phone number with a recording on it that's updated, that, and a number people can call, I mean, that, that stuff, that Facebook stuff, everything gets twisted around on that, and all that, it, they said that's a good way to get out to people, I, I don't like it very good, I want, I'd rather have a...
Well, the good thing is, the good thing is not setting it to where everybody can push this and that.
Right.
Somebody will say, oh, the fire is one mile from my house, and it's 20.
Yeah, we just need a dependable source.
Everybody's got a phone, so I think your idea is great, not everybody has a computer.
The automatic, uh, you know, what we had, uh, when we first started, the phone pages, you know, where it would call everybody and, and put out the same message?
Well, here, here's what you get into with that, is they, every number you list on almost all them is a charge. Yeah, what I would, I thought, and this is probably old school, just a phone number with a, a message machine, and it'd be updated every so often by a reliable source from here, whether it be the dispatchers or whatever, that...
They need to relate to them, and they set the recording.
You mean on our 6991 number?
No, 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 a separate number that is just for that, and, and the only time there's...
Ringing in here when they're trying to do all their stuff.
But, but somebody needs to be responsible to update it every, by the hour, or every 30 minutes, or anytime something changes, but...
Be the, on your place to have...
As long as it wasn't a personal thing.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, a call-out system, that would notify everyone, and, I mean, you're looking four to 7,000 a year, is what those systems cost.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was getting at, is to, and having everybody get their number on there, talking to real pain to get those numbers listed and all that, and I, if we just, like I said, it might be old school, but at this point, I don't know of anything better, whether, nobody has to answer it every time, they just call and get that recording somehow.
Well, then it might alleviate calls to these guys.
Yeah, yes, it would, and, and I think, and that's, once they learn that number, and we need to get it out there, and, uh...
800 people please trying to call and say, John?
Well, it's just like when they had the power out the other night, they, they had people calling all night long.
Yeah.
For no reason.
That, that's gonna be a deal though, that, you know, you're gonna have to remember to put that recording on there, what's going on, and, and, and people are gonna have to get trained to call that number, but it won't take too long with those kind of things, the word will get out. We can advertise it, we can, you know, there's multiple ways to do it, but I, and that's only a suggestion.
Probably have, uh, a couple of different, something to phone in, and then they could have some kind of a Facebook page, and that it would be coming from dispatch.
On there, and then tell them to check this page, or whatever.
You know, uh, because I know that people be trying to call it, and I'm calling it when you're trying to call it, and Brooke just hung up, and they're gonna get antsy because they smell smoke, and they ain't getting through, and they, they need another avenue, a couple.
Yeah.
Multiple, as long as...
Well, like I said, it's just something I think we need to work on, I don't know what's the best, and, and, but that's...
Well, I mean, I think it's something we could try, and if it doesn't work, we're not out a whole lot either.
Right.
What's the O E P C V?
It's a local emergency planning committee.
Sounds good, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much, sounds good job.
Okay, moving on to number 15, uh, new business. Okay, well, this morning, I got a call, there are these REAP grants, which are, uh, kinda standard procedure for these counties through OEDA in northwest Oklahoma. Only thing is, is this year, we've got a couple applying that aren't from incorporated communities, and we've got two water districts, and just realized that these grants are due in the 15th. Well, we, for these unincorporated deals like Water District number two, which is in the west part of Woods County, and Water District number three, which is, comes from Winoka and goes west, also, they're both applying, and we needed resolutions through this meeting by us for them, so I guess that's, we're gonna act under new business so we can get these resolutions for them, uh, that we're, we're in support, what it amounts to is we're in support of them filing, uh, for a REAP grant.
Number two and three?
Yes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Got that water.
My knees. Well...
That Freedom Winoka makes it.
Yeah, well, the, the rules, the, yeah, okay.
Rural Freedom Rule, Winoka.
Yes, actually, the Town of Freedom, there is a water district that services the Town of Freedom land, but it's the Woodward County District that comes in from the south. The District Two buys their water from Coldwater in Comanche County, and it comes down through there and services like 26, 26 people. It runs essentially parallel on both sides of Highway 34 that goes north to Coldwater. Not very many members, but it's just as important to them, Mr., as any. District Three is the one with the office up here by the State Farm building that comes buys water from Alba and from Winoka, and services everything essentially west of 281, all the way from Winoka to the Kansas State Line.
West of 64.
Or 281.
West of 281.
And south, or they go north of 64.
All, all the way to Kansas Line, almost, so...
Right through the middle.
Do you want to order it to sign in?
I don't, if you can, I don't think it needs to be, and... But, that, that's the situation, and so we had to address it under new business, because nobody was sure. Anything else, just new?
Something off the wire, and then you...
It's a new day.
Three, four, yes.
There's a fire, it's getting done, uh...
All it was, you know, they got them, them, uh, gulls that with the winch, and the winch motor, just squirted out, smoked, smoking, it, it, it wasn't nothing.
Don't make me...
Burning, and it just kinda smoked up the gym, and... Okay, number 16, approved, disapproved, blank, purchase orders.
I'll move, we approve those. Most, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 17, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, I'll second that.
I'm here, Doug.